Good morning, everyone. Call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, the ones online also. Make sure you're muted, or Peggy will probably mute you. Agenda confirmation.
Mr. Chair, under number 10, under the consent agenda, I was notified that the sheriff has an additional car that he would like to auction, so I would just like to make note of that. I believe he updated his memo to the board. And in addition to that, under land use environmental services, I think it would be wise if we also added a number three there, and with the title and recognition of the Toad Lake Township Resolution and Moratorium.
Anything else? Motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Second?
Second.
Second, Kimberly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes of October 15th meeting, any additional questions?
I didn't have anything.
I did not have anything either. I know, it's not... You guys are gonna be okay. Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Hey Peggy, let me know when you bet the other way.
Page one of three, under number one, agenda. I think that last line should be stricken, and it's two spots where it says complaints against employee. We never discussed anything about what the... About what the closed session was for. We just stated the statute. We stated the statute, but we did not say... State that there was a... That complaint.
I believe we did.
Uh-uh. Because I did not... I asked after the meeting.
Okay, so we can clarify.
I just... Just state the...
The reason.
Just state the reason. And that was also below on page three of three. And then on number... Page two of three, under Sheriff, I think it should... On number three, motion second purchase, the body worn cameras and the remaining funding coming from budgeted years, but it should be future budgeted years.
Which one is that, Barry?
Number three, under Sheriff, because that remaining $400,000, because this is a six... Five-year plan.
Yeah, so it'll be...
So it'll be... And maybe mention that's a five-year... Five-year plan that will be budgeted in the later year.
Notice that.
Otherwise, good job, Peggy.
No, good job regardless, or... It was very...
Do you think, Richard?
No.
Motion to approve the minutes.
No other corrections? Motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes, but the corrections.
Second. Second.
Second, my Barry. Further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the consent agenda. We did modify number 10. Any other questions, or thing you want to pull?
Mr. Chair, I just had a couple of questions under 12 and 13 and 14. So I don't know if we need to pull them, or just discuss them now? What's your... Well, under... We got on the lighting project, or didn't he have some changes? Didn't he send... No, that was... Was that the culvert lining?
Nope, that was the lighting project.
That was the lighting of the intersections.
The lighting, he did send out emails, everyone with the locations, to ask them do that, and then there was... He finally got the final...
The final.
On the engineering service, and it was under his budget amount.
Okay, with the 90 percent grant. Well, I just had questions. What's the ongoing expense of each... Of each light? I mean...
Electricals, bicycles will be hooked direct to the power source.
What is the... I mean, what's the fee? What is the fee annually on, you know, for each light out there? Because there... I mean, that's 15 of them. I'm just curious on what the annual...
Thirteen.
It's a thirteen?
Yep.
What's the annual... What's the cost gonna be annually for each one? Is there gonna... Is there a...
Maybe we... Maybe we... Maybe you want to pull that and just ask.
If we can pull that one... And I just had... I mean, the lining... I just had some questions about the lining project, not... I just... More informa... Just understand it better. How the lining happens of the...
It's a liner, they did the similar things on 15 and a few other projects, where they slide a liner and seal it.
Do they pull the concrete out, or the...
Nope, nope.
That's... That's a big plus of it, you don't...
But how does it get more flowage?
Well, it'll be smooth in there, for one thing.
Yeah. Right now, we've probably got an issue with probably some... Their concrete section.
Yeah.
They're starting to pull apart, and...
So I referred to more flowage at... From the current rate, probably, than the newer...
Yeah, stopping the road from filtering down, settling into the culvert, sucking it in.
Yeah, I understand that. I just... I thought it was comparing a new culvert compared to this one would be... And it's smaller, so I was wondering how you could... How you could get more.
It's a cheaper fix, rather than...
Cutting the road.
Cutting a road wide open, and you've always got the settlement issues, because you do it probably in one project.
And doing it ahead of time now, we'll see, maybe some of them can't be lined. Maybe they gotta be replaced. But we'll know now, before we get there.
Next year, at the research.
We'll know a lot more about it before we get there to do the road. And they're giving us a break on the price, if we do it now, so...
I saw the price was about the same as what it would be in contract, under a larger contract.
I thought we were getting a break on it.
It'd be less.
Yeah.
Basically, they're using the pricing they gave us a couple of years ago, because they got an open spot right now to finish the fallout, and that's why they're giving...
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's what Jim said, yeah.
Okay, so we don't... I don't need to pull... Would like to... And then I would like to acknowledge more publicly on number 14, just to...
Okay.
Just to say what it is and how many townships are doing that. I would like that to be, instead of just consent, just for announcement. We can just announce it now, but...
That's fine.
Number 14 is the administration under Kerry, the township boards opposing the transfer of land owned to the White Earth Forest, to the White Earth Band of Chippewa Tribe. And it was pretty... I mean, a lot of tribe... Lot of townships are coming out opposing that, and I think that's noteworthy, because the land falls within their boundary. So I just wanted to recognize those townships are opposing that, and...
There's 11 of them, I think. Eleven of the townships.
I don't have the list, but which townships they were, but they... Their resolution is in our packet.
Balloway, Spring Creek, Sugar Bush.
Forest.
Forest, White Earth, Eagleview, Maple Grove, Savannah, Rowland Lake, Raisville. I think that was it. They're missing?
Anyway, that was it. With that, with pulling... Having some more discussion on the...
Basically, what our past electrical has purely expense has been on some that we have out there.
Right. Can we just pull number 12 then, and get that info for later in the meeting? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, with pulling number 12.
I'll second.
Barry, second. Consent agenda, by pulling number 12. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, number 12, do you want which order, since highway isn't on? Do you want to do that right away? I know Jim is online.
Probably Jim.
Is Jim coming here? I don't believe he was going to, because he didn't have other agenda. I was just suggesting that perhaps you want to do that right away, because he's on... I believe he's online.
Yeah, get that information for us, what our past expense has been per late, and just text it over, email it to you.
Okay.
And you can share it with us. Brian. Probation.
Good morning. Did not have time to get this into your packets, so... That is our eligible offenses.
Do you have that still on?
Um, yeah. Well, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Peggy, Kerry. Thanks for having us today.
Morning, Brian. Morning, too.
So, in front of you, today we have an exciting piece within Becker County, within our Department of Corrections' supervision model. We are bringing out and upon pretrial supervision within Becker County. What this means is it basically gives the judicial body and us a different way of monitoring our cases before our clients and defendants go to... Go to court, and before sentencing, et cetera. So before you, I have a proclamation, if I could just go through that today, if you'd like. The first part, Becker County Board of Commissioners is dedicated to promoting public safety, fostering judicial fairness, and improving outcomes within the justice system. Pretrial is a... Pretrial supervision is a program designed to enhance community safety and accountability by providing support and structured supervision to individuals awaiting trial, helping ensure compliance with court ordered conditions and appearances. Pretrial supervision serves to alleviate unnecessary pretrial incarceration, reducing strain on the local detention system, and allowing individuals to maintain community ties, employment, and family responsibilities. Evidence-based pretrial supervision has been shown to reduce recidivism, increase court appearance rates, and support successful reintegration into the community. Becker County Board of Commissioners is committed to upholding the principles of justice, equity, and community well-being through initiatives that responsibly address the unique needs of individuals involved in the criminal justice system. And commencing a pretrial supervision program aligns with Becker County's mission to use innovative, effective, and fiscally responsible approaches to enhance community safety and provide opportunities for individuals awaiting trial to succeed. So on November 1st of this year, just the other day, we were fortunate to start pretrial supervision within Becker County, at no cost to Becker County, which is an additional plus. So with that being said, we do have some members with us in the audience for here for support as well. County attorney, the judicial body, program director, sheriffs, et cetera. So if you have any questions on this, we more than welcome any questions for this new model that we just enacted.
Can you tell me a little... Sorry.
We have Judge Selmoni here in support of it, too?
Yes, sir.
And Judge Lawson.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Miss Baum.
Can you just tell me a little bit more about what it consists of? Like, what does the pretrial supervision mean for those under it and your probation officers?
So basically, good question, Commissioner Jepson. One of the reasons why we want to put pretrial supervision in force within Becker County is research tells us the quicker that we can get somebody within services and within support of our pretrial agent, the more success that that person could have while they're on the actual probation term. Although the treatment component is somewhat what we consider voluntary, because the client has not been found guilty, or hasn't been through the full process yet, it's our hopes that some of the pieces that our clients can complete before they're on probation can ultimately have a positive impact on sentencing, and/or for what they're going to be working on while on their term of supervision. So what it includes is, basically, back in the past, pretrial supervision used to always be about drug testing, and home monitoring, and really just real court conditions based. What we find is our pretrial supervision must include support for our clients versus just UAs and electronic home monitoring, which is basically just another version of jail. So Jody, with her skills and our support, she'll be in constant contact with these folks to make sure that they're appearing for their upcoming court dates, et cetera. And we have a full supervision matrix behind it that provides, if a client is high risk, medium risk, or low risk, where they fall within that matrix for supervision. So those are the components and the reasons as to why. The quicker that we can get them with services, and in tune with what we're gonna be doing on probation, the more successful we could be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, just... I think this is working well. This program hopefully will work well. I will share a concern that some of the staff at the jail had, that this... If it... If these people reoccur, if they roll over fast, it's gonna create more work for them, because they have to admit, you know, multiple times the same person. Hopefully, that won't happen with that... With that interaction, hopefully, we can keep them... Keep those individuals on the right path, so they don't... Don't reoffend during their... During the time where they're on this... So hopefully, hopefully, we have a positive. And I think... I think we will. I think Jody's... Obviously, Jody's been here for a while now, and has a good handle on the client, so I have a lot of respect for your office, so... And obviously, the judges will put those people that should be on it in there, and I think that will be the key to it. But, like you said, some of those individuals end up sitting in jail and don't improve either with a low bond out there, and get them back quickly as possible. Hopefully, hopefully, we get people on the right path, so...
Yeah, you know, and thank you for those comments, too. It's sometimes... If a person can't come up with $500 to just get out of jail with conditions, you know, sometimes why... Why are we putting some of the financial strains within that piece of it? Whereas, we can have the supervision model to serve even better than just someone sitting in jail over that small amount of cash bail bond. So we're fortunate enough to have the staff capacity to do this, and I think some of the concerns that the jail staff had could mirror anything for folks being on just regular probation as well. So I just think that this is another positive avenue that we'll grow into over time, and ultimately, we've got some data that we'll be collecting over the next six months to a year, and sharing with the jail as to what works, what didn't work, what are some challenges, what are some strengths. And ultimately, we'll be reporting back to the board as well, so...
Just one more, Jared. Is... Did I understand it right, that this is voluntary, or is it court ordered?
The required piece of it is participating within the pretrial supervision part of it, making contact with your agent, going to treatment, attending that counseling session, getting your CUA, all that kind of stuff. That's a... That's a voluntary piece of it, where the treatment part of it, but the actual supervision part of it, that's ordered, that's required.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
But the treatment could help the later on. Correct law, actually. Correct. And now, yeah. Yeah. That's the nice part about it.
Any comments, Jody?
Nothing, I'm ready.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, we have a motion, resolution in front of us, or a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1124-1G.
I'll second.
Motion by Erika, second by Dave. Excuse me. Further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One reminder, the packet that I did give to you was the eligible offenses for the assessment for the Minpat. The judges in our area, or within our judicial in Becker County, have the discretion to go outside of that if they wish. So that's one thing that I forgot to mention.
Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
Veteran Services.
Good morning.
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 So today, you have green lights in front of you, and this is to represent veterans, and it's called Operation Green Light for Veterans. So it was brought to my attention that it's an opportunity for the counties to show that they're... They have a lot of support for the veterans, because we have veterans that maybe don't always feel it. And so we took, between myself, Kerry, Peggy, we started putting up a bunch of green lights, so that way veterans in the county can see us. Now, I know it's for county-wise, and it's a short notice, but I think showing everybody that we are here for them, they're not by themselves, I think it would be... It would be wonderful to be able to do it every year. You know, it can be inexpensive. There's... By the documents, there's a website. I mean, Amazon has a bunch of green lights that actually... You can purchase... Purchase them through veterans, too, because it's veteran-owned businesses. And I just thought that it would be something worth doing and showing them. If we can get the county buildings to put them up, I have to give credit to Peggy for this, because she did something like this for everybody to put on their desk, for people that don't have windows. So, and you'll see those throughout. We got lights for the carriage out here, some solar lights, I thought would be an opportunity also.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Peggy. Thank you, Peggy.
Thanks, Peggy, yeah.
Yeah, I think, like, in future years, I think the week is what, November? What's it... What are the dates?
November 4th through the 11th, but they did say that you could start displaying them in October.
Okay.
It was on the website.
But I think we... If we can look at some of our county lights on the exterior, it would be nice to...
Yeah, I think they made green...
To film.
To... Yeah, film to put over them, so that when they... When it... The lights shine, it's green at night. So...
Anything else?
Yeah. I have... There's a table. So on the last whereas, it says "the" Becker County. It maybe says... It should say "that" Becker County, or "the" Becker County Board of Commissioners, or something like... Does that make sense?
Yep.
With the modification, our motion to approve 1B.
I'll make a motion to approve 1B with the change.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Erika. Further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Karen, thanks.
Thank you.
Is that... That might... You might win the vet, no?
Moving on, Commissioners, open forum. Have hold this. Thank you. Quite a few, so try to limit your time coming up and speaking with that. Roxanne Zick.
Good morning. My name is Roxanne Zick. I live at 20997 West Toad Lake Drive, Osage, Minnesota. I am very appalled at the Becker County Commissioner, shame on you. There had been many meetings regarding the Toad Mountain Project, when the people of the township and the county said no at this project, and it was voted on, and the Commissioners went to many meetings in regards to this and said, "Okay." Anyway, and the Commissioners voted no on the project. Then money came in, into play. Everything the Toad Lake Township Board, the other people in the county have worked on, went out the windows like it had never happened. Now, I am sorry to say, the county Commissioners are not listening to the township residents or the people of Becker County. To take 252 acres off of Becker County's tax roll, which the county would get $3,500 out of it, and the township gets $1,700 out of that piece of property. Who will be floating these bills? Will it be you, the county Commissioners? No, it will be the residents of Toad Lake Township and Becker County. Has the board really took into account what the residents have told them? County Board about the Toad Lake Mountain Projects. They voted down the project, but now, because money... An anonymous donor, Karen, has pledged $50,000. Well, we're back at it again, and it's like, we never even were able to voice our opinions, because the money came in, so now it's back on the table again. So I am saying, as a citizen who has lived in Toad Lake Township since 1975, will you be skirting the bills here, at the county, for this project? What is wrong with our county Commissioners? I presumed they were for the residents of Toad Lake Township and Becker County. Once again, money has overtaken the common sense. As they say, money talks, so it is quite a true statement. Voted no on the project, but the minute money came in, all of a sudden, the project's a go again. And it's not even going to be usable. But, anyway, I am not happy with the city's... The county's decision, so please listen to some of the people who pay your wages, and rethink this situation. Just because money came, doesn't mean that needs to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Don Olson.
I'm going to do your first part.
Okay, thank you. Lori.
And I guess I am pretty much in the same. There's not a whole lot different to add, other than, you know, our town board is against it.
Okay, thank you. Willis.
The item is on the agenda later, right? The moratorium, is there gonna be comment there, otherwise I'll...
The moratorium?
Yeah, the Toad Lake Moratorium, is that on the agenda now? For discussion and possible comment at the time?
If you want to respond to it now, it'd be the time.
And then, the complaint, will that also allow for comment at that point? Because I don't know what's the appropriate time.
We got a work session after... We have a little work session with the board afterwards.
Okay, so I'll keep those comments there, so... Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Willis Matz, and I live out in Shell in Toad Lake Township. I just want to bring to your attention that the Isaac Walton League of America Local Chapter has voted to support the acquisition of the property and the development into a low-impact passive-use recreation area for restoration and preservation. It's very consistent with the goals and objectives of the Isaac Walton League, the oldest conservation organization in America, over 100 years old, one of the most successful conservation organizations. The Isaac Walton League also has an endowment program on a national level, and our chapter is prepared to submit an application to that endowment to assist in the restoration and conservation and environmental education components of the park, should it move forward. There is available to us between $25,000 and $50,000 for that kind of endeavor. We also have expertise in the development of recreational trails. One of our members is the supervisor of the North Country National Scenic Hiking Trail, and is very skilled at the appropriate routing, and sighting, and construction, and maintenance of recreational trails. And we can make that as a volunteer contribution to the design and development of the facility. We also would like to offer the expertise of others in our chapter membership in terms of ecological restoration. It happens to be an area of experience and expertise of my own, and the chapter has offered to put my name forward for any technical advisory committee that might be established, and we strongly recommend that there be one, because of the local talent that's here and familiarity with the facility and the attributes out there. As the proposal is put forward for applying... As the proposal is put forward for applying for state grants, it's very important that the detailed physical, biological, and natural attributes of a facility be well-described so that its uniqueness stands out in order for it to qualify as a, as a regional, regionally significant facility. So we offer those support and potential financial contribution and technical contributions as well. So we're very pleased to be a partner with the county if that project moves forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Willis.
Thank you. Scott Hildy.
My name's Scott Hildy. My address is 41999 County Highway 56, Frazee, and I can see Toad Lake, or almost see Toad Mountain from my house, it's only about four miles away. But it sits in a swamp, so you really don't see a whole lot of it unless you're right there. The elevation is only because it sits in a swamp. There's land close to that that's not much different in elevation. I'm surprised we are even doing this because this was voted down on September 17th by all the county commissioners. And like Roxanne said, it just goes to show what money does and how money corrupts. And it's like we get all these grants, oh, we got money coming here, we got money coming there, it's all taxpayer money. And at this point, the way the economy is, we don't need things like this. We got problems with roads, the infrastructure of Becker County, all the sewage lines are collapsing that need to be repaired. I don't see why we're throwing money down a rat hole. You know, talk about conservation on this, and there's a bunch of stuff that's going to require maintenance besides trails. Conservation is, leave it alone, in my mind. But we get the Isaac Walton League and somebody in charge of this, somebody in charge of that, now we just created another boondoggle. I say, this thing was already voted down, why, why are we even talking about it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Knudsen.
Larry Knudsen, 44, 220 10th Street, Osage, Minnesota. Well, here we are again. July 16th, this thing was tabled, it should have stayed on the table, it should have never been brought back with all the information that we have now. August 20th, you were informed that Township had voted this thing down, had wanted no part of the county being involved in this project whatsoever. September 17th, you made a motion to reject all services providers, offers and bids, including SRF, and discontinue our pursuit of the purchase of the Toad Mountain. Now, the county attorney sits here, but statute, and statutes can be pesky little things. 374-13 says that all proposals and bids are rejected. It suggests that you have to go back for more, or different RFPs or bids, whatever the case might be. Again, the county attorney's sitting here, again, they're pesky and they're hard to understand, but that's what 374-13 stands for. Now, the county board, or the township board, in my mind, was bullied into doing this. We had several meetings at the township level, they did not want to pass a moratorium, they just didn't do it, and they didn't want to do it. And you know what? I'm a capitalist. I don't like this sort of thing either. This is a drastic measure, but that's what it seems like it's gonna, it takes to get you people to listen. You bullied them into doing this, they did, they went as far as they could with this, they couldn't put a moratorium on a county not buying the property. But what they did do was say that if you do do this, we're going to have control at the end of this. Now, last night at the Highland Town Board, one of the supervisors had called me and asked for a copy of this, and he brought it to his meeting at the Highland Town Board. And they, he called me later and said they're all on board for doing this. If the county is not going to listen to the townships, this is what the townships have to do, they have to take local control. Now, you're going to say, I'm sure, that this is just a study and it really has nothing to do with the mountain, but it absolutely does have to do with the mountain. The study is about the end result of what we can do with that mountain. Well, what the township and the residents of that township want is no county involvement in that mountain. That's what they want. Now, today, we're back again, this is three and a half months we've been dealing with that. You've been forcing these people to come in here and, and talk to you people. Every time you people step into this room, you're getting a per diem and mileage. These people are getting nothing for coming here. You've got two contractors in this room today that had to leave their jobs and weather is getting tight in this country, leave their jobs to come in here and talk to you people. It seems like you're not listening. The fact is, townships are starting not to trust the commissioners, and that's not a good situation. It's almost like the county doesn't, uh, trust the state and the state doesn't trust the government, the federal government. We're in a bad place in this country, people. We need to wake up.
There you go. Dave Knopf.
Hello, my name is Dave Knopf, Lakeview Township, 12649 280 Avenue. I've come here as a concerned Becker County taxpayer to speak on the same subject that most, all these other people have spoken or have all have. It has to do with how we look at these projects and how come it had to come back again after we've, you know, it seems like we've went over it in a lot of public hearing meetings, you say through public meetings, it's happened, and somebody comes up with a grand idea, a new idea how we can, well, I'm going to call it a carrot. Somebody drops a $50,000 carrot in front of us and all of a sudden, maybe a $6 million project's back on the table. You know, all the people in that township, if we want to, we talk about grassroots, there's never, there's not a more closer to the people, government than the township. And the township, and the township people and the, are saying no to this project, why do we want to keep bringing it to the table? Keep, if somebody puts money on it, I believe if that's possible and it's as good as they seem, that, if that study has to be done, can it be done privately by that money? And also be done so that, you know, in the fact that it can be viable through the Isaac Walton or some other group to totally fund it and own it? As this country moves forward, I don't know if you're following the news at all, the land seems to be bought more and more, there's more and more reasons governments can take land from, out of private ownership, which is totally what the country should not be doing. It was why when it came from England years ago, that they wanted the land to be a people's land, not the government's land. Every little reason we come up with, we're apparently telling the people, you're not smart enough to manage your land, so we're going to do a better job for you. So once you take, this is another 252 acres, next thing you got the reservation land, that, you know, when does it, you've just got to think of other ways, and it's tax money, there's never, a grant is tax money, it's not free money. So I'm just going to get everything that this township people are saying, and we create another problem for county planning when you talk about zoning. Every township, we don't need, I was on town board in Lakeview with John years ago, and townships don't need more burdens, the county should be helping them, advising, but we're going, you don't trust your county commissioners to continue to help townships so they don't have to spend more of their own money planning their own zoning, you're going to create another animal for these township supervisors and people to manage and cost, and that way alone, you're going to cause more stress on the budgets for the smaller townships. So I would hope that if you do have to vote on this, and I don't know why you'd even have to vote on whether this study goes forward, I would hope you'll vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Schramm.
Jerry Schramm, Erie Township. Folks, you've, you've been through this many times. I have heard you say that you would listen to the townships, and here it is. You don't listen, you don't listen, you don't listen. I hope we don't have to get to where it's George Custer having his ears opened up after a serious battle. But we're just not listening. We're not listening, we're not listening to the townships. And you have told us that you would listen to them. Now, I have another, another thing I want to talk about as well. And I've talked about this before, you're probably tired of it, but our forest roads are terrible. They're, they're probably about, oh, may, maybe they're 1924 roads, let's call it that. Well, I, I've been, I spent a lot of time in the woods, I like to look at grouse that I used to shoot, I look at deer that I, and I, I like to look at leaves, and I just like to see the peace up there. And Becker County roads are terrible. I can take and drive my Challenger, which is a low-slung car, I can drive it in Monhouman and Clearwater County, two of the poorest counties in Becker County, and I can drive that car and no, no scraping, no dragging, no bumps. And what's wrong? What's wrong? This is what government is supposed to do, one of the first things is, is make adequate roads. Look it up and that, that's why governments were organized. And here we are, we've got terrible roads, and I keep saying, yeah, yeah, we're going to do it, and, well, we've got a man here on the board that knows all kinds of things about roads and, you know, the kind of maybe I, this simpleton just kind of figured out, maybe you got to put some gravel on it. Those, those roads in those other counties are, are, they've got gravel on them, they stand up. Now, folks, quit, quit daydreaming over this Toad Hill, and, and let's, let's get, get to work, back to basics and get our, our, our roads in shape. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Randy.
Good morning. Randy Wurst, 42002, 165th Street, Frazee, member of Toad Lake Township, also the chairman of board at Toad Lake Township. We've, many of the people have expressed their opinions throughout the summer on this project. We, as elected officials, myself and you guys included, our jobs are to be stewards of the people we serve. And because of that, we've clearly said where we're at, and at getting free money to, just because we'd like to do a study, isn't the right way to approach it. You know that we, as a township, are against it. You also heard from other townships who are supporting them where we're at. So I would ask you to consider that and stand at your word and vote no.
Thanks, Randy.
There you go.
Thanks, Randy.
Is there anybody online that wants to speak? Clark? He called me last, yesterday and wanted, probably is none.
I don't see him.
No. It's not the number he called from yesterday, so. Is there anybody else? Some came in late, want to speak to this issue, or anything to open forum? Close, open forum. Reports and correspondence.
Mr. Chair, maybe we could hop down to County Minister, just take Dr. Nicole and let her, so let her move on.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Strand is here, and after a long time of trying to coordinate her schedule, I thought it would be nice for the board to actually meet her and give her the opportunity to introduce herself.
Yes, hi there, thank you for having me today. I'm Nicole Strand, a family physician, and I started back in August as the Becker County Coroner, and it was a pretty big learning curve, but it's going well, I really enjoyed working with law enforcement, and I've met quite a few people at the funeral homes as well, and anyway, it's been a good experience. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, let's see, I was born here in Detroit Lakes and my family's from here, my husband's from here. I graduated from Frazee High School in 1995 and then did my undergrad up in Duluth, got a bachelor's science degree in cell biology, and then from there, went to medical school, also through the University of Minnesota. And then I did residency, so I, my, I have a, did residency in family medicine, and I did that through Mayo Clinic. And then my first job out of residency was in Wadena, where I did all the family med things, delivered babies, hospital, ER, clinic, all that stuff. And then we decided to move back home to Detroit Lakes, so we came back here in 2015, and I've been at Ascensia, Cent's then, and then I changed to full-time ER in, I think, 2018, and so that's where I'm at. What else? Let's see, my husband is Brent Jerswig, we've been together for many, many years, and we have two kids, two daughters, that are ages 13 and 14, that go to the DL Middle School, and that's about all there is to say, I guess. Any questions or anything?
No. I guess, welcome.
Well, yeah, yeah, thank you for being our corner.
Yeah, thank you. We, we've met you a while ago, I think, was it?
Yeah.
What committees? It was, it's been a while, but, um, thank you for, for doing this for us, because it's a, it's a great, it's, it's a great asset for the Sheriff's Department to have this local connection, so.
Yeah, I enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back, reports and correspondence.
Clark just called, he's calling in a 952 number, you guys are accepting it or something?
Okay, we see it up there.
There's a number up there. There's a 952 number up there.
He said he's on the line.
He's muted or?
He's got to unmute himself.
Clark, can you unmute yourself? He's still muted there.
Yeah, yes, he unmuted himself.
Clark, can you unmute your phone? We'll move, move on, apparently we got some issues there. Okay, reports and correspondence.
Mr. Chair, just a suggestion of Clark Lee wants to, I, he's muted on his end, but perhaps if he hung up and rejoined, then he would maybe unmute himself by doing that, if he can hear me.
Okay, I can try that, if he comes back up, we'll, we'll, um, just speak. Reports and correspondence.
I can go first. We had a West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting, the board meeting, they have purchased body-worn cameras, which was a bit of an expense, but really they're, they're seeing continued mental health concerns amongst the youth, which really, they're hoping will lead to less conflicts among them.
Clark?
Yes.
We'll let you speak now, you have a problem unmuting yourself.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to be more clear because I'm in an area where a cellphone isn't bad, so thank you very much, Commissioner Okason. Good morning, commissioners, and can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. My name is Clark Lee and I live at 20552 County Road 117, Big Toad Lake. And I think the majority, if not all of you as commissioners, are aware that this past Saturday morning, there was a special meeting at Toad Lake Township. And the purpose of the meeting was to consider adoption of a moratorium on land use in Toad Lake Township, which I'm not for certain if it was passed or they're, they're getting ready to pass it, Randy Wurst could best speak to that. But, given the fact that I feel it is only logical that when you as county commissioners, you are asked this morning to approve going ahead with the SRF study at a cost of $52,791.50 that you vote no. Granted, the cost of the study is supposedly donated funds, or is donated funds, but realistically, to approve this expenditure isn't fair to the donor or donors. But more important is the fact, it's been a reference this morning, is that four of you for sure, and possibly even Commissioner Okason, have publicly stated at least once that if the Toad Lake Township supervisors, as well as residents and attendees at the public meetings, do not want the Toad Lake Mountain Project to move forward, you would vote against it. Clearly, at numerous township meetings as well as public meetings, and now with a moratorium either in place or about to be in place, there could be no misunderstanding that Toad Lake Township does not want county involvement in deciding land use for Toad Lake Township, specifically Toad Mountain. If you do move forward, I would ask that before you vote yes this morning, that you take a very long and hard look at the resolution that you passed, accepting the donated funds. In my opinion, it could be logically assumed that the way it's written, if you approve the study, and it suggests moving ahead, which we all know it will, because if you pay somebody $52,000, they're going to come out with a positive, you know, move, movement, that... that Becker County is committed to buying the mountain. Please vote no and live up to what you have promised us as Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Now back.
All right. So they purchased the body worn cameras in hopes of really, first, safety for the, the employees as well as for the youth that are involved. They've also terminated their nursing contract because of some communication issues and issues with getting communication with the doctors. So in exchange, they've hired two RN nurses through their public health to take care of the, the youth in their, the juvenile center. They've also, we also discussed, which I see is on the agenda, the support for the PRTF, that they are looking at now, you know, last year when we had signed support for them or a letter of support for them, they were looking at doing the PRT, building a PRTF. But now they're looking at doing the PRTF, which is a psychiatric residential treatment facility in their shelter, which is their non-secure unit. And then they would be building an additional non-secure unit. So I think it's important.
The non-secure unit would be much cheaper to build than.
Much cheaper, because it already has all of the, the necessary things for a PRTF.
Correct.
And there's a huge, huge need for PRTFs in our state, so.
Can you tell me the acronym for PRTF?
PRTF.
Or it's?
It was in, it's in that.
Psychiatric Residential Treatment Facility.
Yeah, there you go.
So.
Take that one.
Yes.
I was trying to figure it out, because I have, it has, I have heard it, but I always get the, this last part of it wrong.
Oh, sure.
Residential treatment.
We, I also had West Central Economic Development Board. They have, we went over the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which talks about the progress that we've made since the adoption of it, which I, we're nearing the end of it. So it was interesting and I have a copy of it if anybody wants to see it. It's interesting to see what other counties have done in the region on those nine areas. One of, you know, one of the areas is of course, jobs growth, affordable housing, childcare. And it, it's very clear that it's an issue in all of the nine counties that West Central Initiative serves. So it's just a very, very interesting read. I also had the Crowing One Watershed One Plan. We approved the watershed plan. I believe Brian plans on bringing it to the board for our approval at the next board meeting. So once we then approve it, then it'll go to Bowser for their approval. And then it is hoped to be implemented in the spring. I think that's it. We had our AMC District Four meeting. I thought it was interesting in, in reading one of the documents they have. Our county, Becker County, is the lowest, has the lowest county tax rate amongst all the counties and the districts. So I thought that was interesting to read. And of course, it was interesting just to hear from other counties and their issues and their levy. You know, all their levy increases really are due to wages, you know, similar to ours. So I think that's it.
Thanks. Go ahead, Randy.
The Sheriff, Sheriff's Committee met with Klein McCarthy to talk about the impound lot building. They did some research. Wasn't exactly the research that we were asking for, but the price was way too high. And we said, I mean, but they, we kind of asked for, to get some quotes for, what we asked for was get quotes for building a building. And they came back with an estimate. And the estimate was a steel frame building, which we don't need. And so we're moving forward with trying to go locally and just get a pole, price of pole shed.
Not just interject there. We had that pretty close here two years ago. I worked with local vendor to get a material list and a plan.
And I think Kerry's grabbing that and, and looking at what we can, if we can move forward with that.
Good option. Let's do it locally.
And then Brian, Brian came and talked about what we, we approved earlier.
Yep.
We went through the squad, so, you know, we looked at selling the old squads and, and there's one that might go to the airport if, if they want it at that price.
Yeah, I believe they want it, but we won't meet till about the middle of the month to approve it.
So that one will be going, going to them if they want it. If not, I think we approve to just go to auction also. Just a new med cart, which is just over the limit for just buying it internally, thirty-two hundred dollars. And, and they're gonna repurpose the old one for a tool chest, but because the locks quit working on it. We discussed just what, I think that's been, we've been on the agenda and we did get the second payment from WeFest. I think that was all for sheriffs.
One more thing, the sheriff, the cars that we purchased, the squads, are going to go to production in December, but they might not.
The Fords.
The Ford, yeah.
The Chevys, we got, we got the two Chevys.
Two Chevy. They might not be ready by the end of the year. So we might, might have to roll it over into.
Financial.
Financial wise next year and.
Start of our capital.
Start of our capital plan, yeah.
Well, that's what we told, for, so we can't start capital fund for last year, but for, for twenty twenty-five, we are gonna put those items in a capital fund, you know, so we don't have this problem ongoing, so.
Yep.
Also at Lakeland Mental Health, we did also pass a, a resolution supporting the.
PRTF.
PRTF. Lakeland was a support that. And, and just another thing on that, there's only four in the state, I think. And there's nothing in the Northwest. So it's, it's very, it's a very, it's very strong possibility it will get some support down in the capital. We, we had our meeting up at the, the new Moorhead Facility, very nice. They, they finished, finishing, finishing touches. So we had our meeting there. They had a, they had an open house and, and went very well. Was supported by their, kind of like their chamber for the West Fargo, Fargo Moorhead area. Also going to have a meeting with Moorhead. Moorhead, like Moorhead, their, their library was in their new community center. So that's, they're building that. But we have that meeting coming up. We also, I think the whole board got forwarded the questions about the, the childcare or the childcare grants that we're applying for. The concern, there's some concerns out there for established businesses that this will have an unfair advantage. So if we're not gonna do rent assist or, you know, ownership assist, this will be an unfair advantage. And, and I do agree with that. And, and they also stated out, there's not a shortage of some of the, some spots. It's more of the infant spots. And, and so I think we have to take a careful look at that too when we, when this opportunity comes forward. I don't think, I don't think this is a solve all by any means. So I don't know that we can have on public, on county property and give a rent assist on this. So if it's, if it's gonna be rent assist, I don't know if we can.
Well, I think that's similar to what Stevens County is doing. I mean, that's, it, that's the model that we.
It doesn't make it right.
Right?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure if they, how they assist.
I don't, yeah.
They got the grounds to build the building. And they're gonna add to it now. But their needs might be a little different ours up here.
Mr. Chair, and with the childcare grant, and I don't recall if this board has been given the update, but as far as the initial plan that Cody had talked to this board about building, you know, additional actual sites, that they weren't able to get all of the data in for the grant, so.
So we're not moving forward with that?
That portion of it, that's correct.
So the, the county owned facilities will not be part of it?
That's correct.
Good, because that, I was, I was a little, I'm hesitant on that end of it, so.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Kerry. Also had Soil and Water. They're doing a lot of, you know, they're finishing up a lot of their works in the counties now. And I think that was, oh, Dave and I had Courthouse.
Yeah.
I think, I think, again, what's the, what's the word? What's the payroll? And entered?
UKG.
UKG.
Yeah.
Having still a lot of question, or questions and concerns with that, I think Tiara's, is doing a remarkable job, kind of correcting some of those and getting those, those lined up. She did ask if we should maybe look in the future to move that under, under her direction. I think my opinion at this time is, with her being so new on that job, I think we wait for that decision for down the road a bit.
Yep, I, I, and we agreed with that, yeah.
So, but good to have the, the energy and the gumption to take, to be willing to take that. I mean, that's, that's a.
My understanding, she's very experienced in UKG.
Okay.
That's what, why she's been able to fix some of the issues that.
Very quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also in Courthouse, we talked, Brent brought in his, his possibility for a five-year facilities capital plan. And there were some immediate needs in that capital plan. So we had talked about rolling that into the, the bond for the impound building.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to have a work session to look.
We might have to look at.
Because there's three boilers that are be, coming up, that are nearing life expect, life end. We've replaced one of them and those are about a hundred and fifty each. And I think those are the things that we're gonna have to get a capital line in our budget for replacement of these things ongoing also.
Yes. And I guess we have to see what's gonna happen with our impound building first. The price is too high on the other portions.
Yeah, we'll have to. But I think there's some things to consider.
Yes.
But I think we need a work session to get the whole board on the same page on where we, what we're looking at, how we're gonna fund it. And, I mean, these, these boilers could go down, you know, in a week or a couple of years. And, and if you recall, the last one, it was more expensive to fix it than it was to put a new one on, so.
And then one other thing we, we did talk about was the, we had a security issue in the DMV office. So we're, they, we got, we came, they come up with a plan. Brent, Brent's gonna do some constructing in there to put a, like, put a door or a, or a half wall between the end of the seated area and to the, where they take the pictures and, and do the eye testing. So it can't just walk back.
It was a disturbance that didn't raise to the, an offense of.
Yeah.
A crime or.
A crime.
Or a ticket, but it was.
It could have been prevented with a, with a parcel wall.
Similar to what's in the officer.
Yeah. Yeah.
We, I think.
And, and, and hats off to our, to Luke. He came over there and defused the situation and took care of it pretty rapidly. So that was nice to have him available to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, we did talk about the nine one one or all call and the panic buttons.
Yeah.
Similar to where they'll be placed. And, and that we approved a while ago to have some panic buttons here. Think that was it.
Is it? I, I can go next. I had a Historical Society meeting last week. They did do their Haunted Hill at Detroit Mountain. I guess it went very well. The weather kind of deterred it a little bit, but it was really, they, they really enjoyed being out there because of the darkness of the, of the area and, and so forth. So they're, they're looking at maybe partnering again next year with Detroit Mountain and doing the same thing. They'll see though. It is a big stress on their staff, but it, it is something that people enjoy. So they want to continue to do those things. They also had, one of their, one thing they've decided to do every year now is, is a larger fundraiser. So they had a bootlegger bash at the end of October, actually in the middle of October. And they did raise a pretty good amount of money. They raised twenty-two thousand dollars for the, for the museum. They're planning on having the, the same theme next year and it'll be September twenty-seventh. And I'll keep reminding everybody about it, because I'll keep telling you. They, they hope to, they hope to get more participation at this, at this bash next year. They had it scheduled, but then there's so many things that get scheduled around things in, in here and there. And so they had to move it a couple of times, so they get away from some of these things. Well, then they got themselves in a different bind where there's other stuff going on. So they're just gonna keep it, stay with it and they're done. And the last thing we talked about at the Historical Society is they are going to have the coffee shop open this year. Well, maybe not this year, but during the school year. So their goal is, because they're gonna partner with Detroit Lakes High School. They're going, Detroit Lakes High School is going to operate it. And they're going to hopefully have that done before the end of the school year. Hopefully maybe sometime in February or January where they can come over and, and, and open up that coffee shop. Now, they do have to be able to run it throughout the summer when it's not during school. So that's one thing that they're looking at, or the executive director's looking at doing, so that she can continue to run it. So she'll have to have some staff do that too, so. I also had the Dancing Sky meeting, which is the area aging, aging agency. There's just a couple, we talked about a lot of stuff, because we only have quarterly meetings, but I'll just touch on a couple bigger ones. So their funding, their budget is lower for their, for their, for this year. They, they are, part of that is that ratio that we talked about a number of times a couple, last year and the year before is, is gone, is changed. So that's decreased the amount of money. And their ARPA funding ended on nine one of twenty-four. So they have, they had to make some cuts. And I think I talked about the cuts that they made last time. So there's some, gonna be some changes, but it, it shouldn't disrupt a whole lot of the services. And then they also got a new vendor for their food, or their nutrition and their food delivery and their meals, their, their meals they deliver and the meals they served on site. And that will be, that, that new vendor will be taking over January first. And I, for the life of me, I can't remember the name of the vendor. But anyway, so they don't expect, Sarah Pender is our, the executive director. She expected to be a very smooth transition. Both, both organizations are on board and, and it shouldn't make any changes at all. Shouldn't affect anything negatively. And actually, some of the, some of the prices will decrease for certain meals that are, because they, they're, they're able to do frozen meals and deliver the frozen meals to the families or to people. And then they're able to eat for like a week, a week at a time. So they're going to be cheaper than they would be if they, if they couldn't do that. So that helps a lot. I just got a couple more, I'll go fast. I also had a DAC meeting. So the biggest thing at the DAC right now is they are still increasing the number of clients. So we have, now we currently have a waiting list for clients. And they haven't had a waiting list, I don't think, for ever, for a very long time. And mainly two reasons why they have the waiting list is, is they're one-on-one, one-on-one clients. So they need, so we don't, they don't have enough staffing for one-on-ones. So they did hire a new day person staff to help maybe at least bring in one of those, maybe two of those people. And then they also have six on a waiting list for in-home services. And they hired a new person to, should be able to cover all six of those people. Because when you, when you do in-home services, you don't necessarily have to be there every day. So they can, they can spread those out. So that, that's, that's a positive thing, where there's more people that are getting interested in the DAC. There's more people going there. The other big thing that we've done is in the last two meetings is we're revising our bylaws and rewriting our, revising our executive director's job description. So we should be able to have that finalized by this month and we'll vote on that. So that's kind of a good, that's a good thing, because the bylaws were twenty-seven years old. So they weren't necessarily applicable. John and I had a fair board meeting. I don't know if you were, you don't think you were at that one?
No, I wasn't.
So they had their annual meeting. So they elected their member, their members, the new members they're having and, and, and the members that were up for, their terms were up, so they re-up for those. They elected their officers. They assigned all their committees. And then the meeting before, they had, everybody was, filled out a sheet that had priorities of what needs to be done on the fairgrounds. And so they made up that list. And the number one thing on that list is the horse barn. It's about ready to fall over. It may make it a year, it may make it half a year, it may make it two years, who knows? And then the next thing was the, the four H exhibit building is got some issues too. So they wanna, they want, those are the two big things. And then they also, one of the third thing on the list was improve the parking for the fair. Maybe, maybe the, maybe how it's managed, how, where they park. Maybe we can use some of the grandstand area for parking, some, something to, to improve the process of parking, to make it better and, and more efficient and so forth. And then next year's fair is July twenty-third to July twenty-sixth. I'm sure all of you guys will remember that, right? And then I, I also had a rack meeting. We talked about the Dunton Lock Shelter. It is up, pretty good. It's pretty, it's, it's framed in, it's got walls and roof on it.
We've been having weekly construction meetings out there. And I did pick the color of the rock, the roofing.
So we're gonna blame you then.
Being it's my backyard. But, and then it's, it's all enclosed, the roofing plumbing's in, the roofing electrical's in. We're looking at even probably putting conduit in or that we can, somebody wanted a presentation. So we have Wi-Fi available in the future for out there for meetings and so forth, so. The metal posts that support going around, they're all painted. So it's, it's moving along. And I think Richard suggested we put in a flow meter in the sewer system to kind of monitor and see how much flow we get.
Well, the tanks there are not, they need to be replaced. But they will last a while. And in order to do that, you should do the drain field. That's, everything should be done at the same time. And so then we have no idea what the flows are out there. So if we put in a flow meter now and watch it and keep an eye on it, then we can size everything correctly and do it all.
Especially during the busier time of the year, summers and stuff, we'll know. And we kind of looked at an area for, it must have to be a mowing system.
Probably.
Could be moved further to the north and so, so.
And we're gonna increase parking after this, I'll, for that.
And then we'll also have. And then we'll also have to connect the bike path. The connection, we'll do that next year. Yeah. And then, uh, Heartland Trail at the rack, uh, the bids are out for the build, continuing the road from the bridge to Frazee. Um, I ho, I think they said they hoped they were gonna have that going by spring. Oh, that should be, then OSH Beach. Uh, the DNR was gonna remove that concrete, but they had an equipment issue. So they're gonna do it next spring, hopefully. And then Woods and Wheels, they are working on the trails. Uh, what is it? East of Elbow Lake, I think? All the, all the ATV trails are getting redone. Mitch and, Mitch had some pictures that he showed us of, of the trails, some of the trails they worked on that are previous and, and later. And they're, it's amazing. They're a big difference. So they're working on that. And they're also looking at having a trailhead at, be right behind Icecracking. Um, and then at Mini Point too, they're looking at having a trailhead. So that, that's an exciting, exciting thing that can happen. Uh, last thing I had, um, at finance, we had talked about, and, and, and at negotiations. Um, we have, we have some, we have one union asked me and the non-union people that are not, that are, are not, they do not have the same longevity as everybody currently else does. Um, as, as far as the contracts. So we had talked about, we have to look at that maybe by next year to get that, uh, in, in check.
Is that it?
Yep.
Richard?
All I had was highway. We talked about the culvert linings. Um, we are, like it said, we are looking at lighting thirteen more intersections. Um, and then, uh, we met with, uh, engineers. We're gonna, I hope to start on West Lake Drive in two thousand twenty-six. So we're gonna try and get a meeting with the city and discuss where, how the lanes are gonna be there. And maybe some tree removal, although there is some opposition to the tree removal. But so, but I guess that's about it.
Uh, there's, there's a lot of dying trees down there. They need to come down anyway. But, uh.
Yeah, if you look at them, just drive through there and look at them. They're, they're nothing to save. But.
Anything else?
No.
Uh, go through mine quick here. I had a Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Meeting. Uh, we're scheduled to do that PFAS testing December second. We're pretty optimistic that we're gonna have good, good numbers there. Uh, as far as garbage being, uh, incinerated, we're about six hundred tons behind budgeted amount. But they figure they can make that up by year end. Uh, we are plying for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for ash recycling and transporting, uh, in, in two thousand twenty-six to a couple Becker County road projects. We're gonna use it in. So hopefully we can get some help there. And with the big bond guards expansion, our steam sales are going up quite a bit for them down there. So it's a plus. Recovered highways, rest is on the agenda. Airport hangar financing is on the agenda. Fuel system's up and running. Once it's all certified, the old tanks will be removed. We did approve new hangar rental rates. We increased them fair amounts. So hopefully we're still cheaper than airports around us. And AMC District Four, Erica covered that. And then I did a little update on it on lock building. So, anything else? Any appointments? None. Everybody just liked their jobs. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a few things to report on. Uh, last week we had our, um, first official safety meeting. I've been talking about this, uh, up and coming and, and hopefully rolling out soon. Um, it was attended mostly by supervisors and department heads. So really the focus of our first meeting was to go over, you know, best practices of what a safety committee should consist of and membership. And a couple of, uh, primary focus areas of, um, streamlining the reporting process through MCIT for property damage, uh, to anything within the county. As well as, um, a shortcoming that I think we've had is we have anybody that has a slip or fall that's, um, not a county employee and where that information goes, as well as, uh, near misses that we can in the future, uh, review through safety committee to hopefully put better practices, you know, in place if we are seeing, uh, certain trends in certain areas. Um, one of the things noted was that, um, with the composition of the safety committee, uh, one area, again, already referenced that it was attended mostly by, um, or was attended by department heads, supervisors. We're really trying to recruit, um, line staff and, and hopefully have the majority of the unions represented on that safety committee as well. And we also have a safe assured contract. So we'll be reviewing that and what we're getting, um, under that contract and, and ensuring that we are getting everything that we're paying for with that. And looking at, uh, safety, um, and how that overlaps as well as with emergency management and, and the different roles between the two committees.
I think that presentation we had at AMC about, um, about accidents or near misses that we, that we go and do the, what's, what do they call the summary or the reflection on that to see how to implement changes in the, for future. I think would be a big part of a, a good safety program.
Yep. So with that note, um, we did review some standardized forms cause they thought it was, was important that, you know, down the road, everybody be trained and, and had, use the same format and, and location of where those are sent. With the idea behind that, then, uh, through the safety committee, we could review some of those near misses. And again, look at if there's certain areas in the county or, or certain situations that we could certainly review and make recommendations back. Um, the RFP is out for, uh, the homeless prevention grants. And those are due back, responses are due back next week. So, um, the steering committee that was put together to review those will meet next week. And hope, we're hoping to have a, a quick turnaround. That money does need to be spent by the end of the year. So we're hoping several community members that meet the criteria for this funding are able to receive that funding and, and that we can spend that down. So we don't lose.
That's opioid settlement?
Nope. That is the homeless prevention grant, separate.
Yeah, that's, I think we had two years.
We do. Yeah. So we're.
Be used by.
By the end of the year. Yeah. So as long as we can, um, answer the RFPs and, and hopefully through the steering committee, uh, determine, uh, amounts, et cetera. Um, let's see. Um, we've already touched a little bit on the capital budgeting. And I guess I'm just looking for some direction. I, I've heard tossed around here as far as a work session. I can certainly schedule that if you would like. I've heard different ideas and I've tried to capture the different ideas from different members of how to go about that. Um, but it may be best if we look for a work session in the near future too, prior to the twenty-five.
Agreed.
I think so.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. Um, let's see. On cannabis, um, I did attend, uh, the work session that the city of DL had. And they were really just trying to, um, get some kind of direction or consensus of where they would like to go with the, whether it be ordinances or through their comp plan and where you can place businesses. And, uh, they really didn't reach any kind of consensus. And I think that that's really what I'm hearing from different entities. That I think a lot of government entities are struggling with what to do, how to do it and when, and the when. Um, we certainly haven't really, um, done a lot of work, you know, on this topic. So again, I've heard, uh, different pieces from, from you all. And we certainly could look at a work session. I can certainly bring some information if you would like to do it that way. Or again, just looking for some direction of how you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, I think, I think a work session would be good. Cause I think we need to get some information out. I mean, I know we, we talked at the township meeting about, about what this means for townships. But it would be good for us to decide what we're gonna do so that we can then get the information out to townships of really what they need to do if they choose to do anything.
Right. And I did have the draft resolution that certainly we could, um, you know, send to any of the smaller cities or townships to defer to the county. But you're absolutely right. Until we have a clear direction of what we're doing, would be difficult to have them to defer to us if we don't know how we're going to proceed.
So I would be in support of a.
Okay. And that draft did, I did send just to our county attorney, just for review for content as well.
It would probably be helpful to have some tribal members there at that work session, just to so, see what they're, what they're doing. And, and I would, I would probably take, refer to that and maybe, maybe, it depends on what there is. But, uh, try to mirror their, some of their requirements too.
We can, we can, we just, we can discuss that Thursday.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, correct.
Yep.
And that, we have a meeting with tribal officials Thursday evening. And that has all been posted, correct? That's all posted and so it's a, it's a public, public meeting and.
It is. It is in the location.
Probably won't get served lunch, but.
Yes, that is posted in, in the agenda.
Thursday.
Um, what I had received for agenda items from, um, from the tribal individuals. And, um, those were posted. But now I know that from our side, uh, Environmental Services had asked for some additional agenda items. So we will amend that. And hopefully they'll, I'll send that off to them today. Hopefully they'll be agreeable to those discussion items as well. Um, in your package, you have, uh, the last of our union contracts. This is a union that was, uh, when we did a, when there was a modification to the LALS groups. This is the union contract for the newly formed union, which consists of the jail administrator and the lieutenant. Um, so, um, with the caveat of what we noted in this, um, redlined contract, it's very similar to the other contracts that have been before the board. Really isn't any additions, um, with the idea that there'll be, um, the two-point-five COLA for this year, three-point-five percent for next. And as well as they'll go into the new salary grid as of April. Um, with that said, um, I did reach out to the business agent on this because what we noted was, um, the agreement that we had for the insurance increase split between the county and employee at seventy-five and twenty-five percent. It's actually written into the contract. So I've asked that that be written in an MOU instead of the contract. And the last word I had late yesterday from the business agent would be that he would be agreeable to that. We're just trying to keep it consistent with our other LALS, uh, contracts. Um, so with that, I would ask for a motion to approve, um, the LALS union contract that's in your packet.
With the modification.
With the modification. Thank you very much.
With the modifications.
Motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll move for that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by, second by Erica. Further discussion? Been a long time going with, when you're getting there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sure. A question on those, on the, um, last contract though. Are we going to mirror that, mirror those same, the same language for non, non-union?
And ASME. These are early, so.
Are we going to mirror that? Is what I'm asking.
Um, specifically to.
The longevity.
Um, I think that that's what, uh, Commissioner Meyer was indicating. And I think that that, um.
We're gonna look at that next meeting.
Yes, I've talked to the HR director to look at, uh, the modification for that. And the plan was to bring that forward.
Bring that back.
Prior, uh, and effective twenty-twenty-five. Yep. Um, the next item that I have is, um, regarding, uh, the county fleet vehicles. I took this through courthouse and finance. Um, we do have some, uh, funding that's referenced in the resolution. And, uh, I would just like to do a shout out to, uh, Brent and, uh, well Brent, as, as specifically and Jesse. They did some, some legwork on, uh, the recommendation as far as purchasing, uh, locally of these vehicles. As you all are aware, um, the courthouse, um, vehicles and several of the human service vehicles haven't been replaced. And they're, um, in need of being replaced. Um, so I would ask, uh, one, I should, uh, mention that one of the vehicles, I, I did have them go through the vehicles of which, which were in the worst shape and which ones we should auction. And one of the vehicles was over, also over at Human Services, their van. That's, uh, they suggested that they, they get rid of. Um, so one of the vehicles for certain would, um, replace over at the Human Service, uh, building as well.
That would be the, then they want a little bit larger vehicle for replacement.
Yeah, I thought we already.
And they did, they did purchase a trav, a traverse.
Traverse. So they do have one currently, but the reason why they kept the van, from my understanding, is that they wanted to have another one. So in the future, they'll probably want another larger one too.
Um, we'd probably need the VIN numbers on the resolu, or attach these vehicles also.
Yes. And I could certainly, um, modify that. And there is a resolution in your packet. I recall, it didn't get, uh, in the actual agenda, the resolution, but it is in the packet.
Yep.
So I would, I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Prove one K with the addition of the VIN numbers.
With the addition of the VIN numbers.
Vehicles.
What's my barrier?
For sale.
I'll second one K.
My name?
Just for the sale vehicles, not the purchase vehicles.
Got it. Yes.
Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
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 And, and then there's also what about thirty-two left in that fund?
Yes.
Roughly. So there would be enough to purchase another.
And the fund that we're talking about is the local assistance and tribal consistency fund that was.
Yep.
Correct. Correct. That hasn't been stepped down. And then I just wanted to note, um, you know, with discussion of the fleet vehicles, I think it's going to be important, you know, that we have, um, better processes and protocols in place for these as far as signouts and making sure that we're tracking mileage. There's been some issues with that. And, uh, the plan would be to, um, make sure that information is in the car. So employees have that information.
Wonder if we can ask IT to maybe do that on, put an online form, maybe.
Well, we do have, we do have an online form, but I think the struggle is, you know, with employees coming in and out. And especially if they come in late, you know, having to log back on. So the, um, again, just working out the process. The intent would be for our office to, you know, keep keys and binders and, and make it, try to make it easier so that we can track that for employees. So they write down mileage and such. And then Peggy would be trained on these online system and to ensure that we have, um, a log of who's driving and mileage, et cetera.
Yeah, it would be nice to have something. I don't know what the answer is, but I was a guilty employee. I've been, I'm not, not good about writing down mileage when you're home at late, late at night. So I don't know. You know, maybe we can talk to IT if there's some way or they could take a picture of the odometer when they get back. Um, I don't know what.
Right. And I just, I, I, you know, however, we can make it easier, easiest for the employees, but yet to make sure we get, you know, the information. Because, you know, even, um, if we have employees driving vehicles and we don't know locations of where they're going and we don't know who's driving. I mean, I think about the safety aspect of that as well. We have employees out in the county potentially driving vehicles and we don't know who's got it and where they are.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that's concerning to me. So.
Okay.
Um, next item I have is a resolution eleven-twenty-four-one-C for the airport financing. Um, this has, um, been kind of a long time, uh, long time discussion, I guess, with the, between the county and the, the city. Originally, the city had went out for, um, looking for, um, outside financing. And what they found was the interest rates were quite high. So the suggestion was to come back to each of the entities and split the cost of the hangar, um, construction going forward and to look at internal financing. So I did have Mary review this as well as our county attorney, the documents that are in your packet. And, um, it was suggested, and I can modify this as well through finance, that, that we also on the resolution add in where the actual money, uh, where we're taking them, which fund we're taking the money from, which would be the special general, um, is what Mary had suggested. So.
With that, I make a motion to approve one C.
I'll second.
Do you want to put in that motion that the money comes from special general?
Yeah.
I can modify the resolution before I sign off on it.
Modify.
Okay.
Motion and second for the discussion?
Uh, just a question. Does the, does the income from the new, from the rents of those facilities pay for the, is, does it pay for it in full?
Yes.
So we're not giving them a stipend and then they're paying back us with the stipend? Okay.
Yeah. They raise the rates as well.
They raise the rates and it, it should cover the rental.
And there's.
Similar like we did with the Maddy flight.
And there's still a waiting list, correct? Yeah. So that should be no issue.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Sure.
The next item, um, for consideration is resolution eleven-twenty-four-one-D. And this was, uh, Commissioner Jepson had already referenced the need for PRTFs, um, in the state. And, uh, this is in support for Clay County moving forward with their, um, request for an additional PRTF in this, um, in the western part of the state. So it's just, uh, this resolution is, is support, in support of them moving forward with, uh, financing, uh, for their facility.
And I think, I think what they're, specifically what they're asking for is the only way for this to work is for them to get funding through the legislature for the building of the, the non-secure.
Correct.
So, so it, they're not pursuing funding for the PRTF, but they're pursuing funding to build the non-secure shelter so that they can utilize the, that, the PRTF, their current non-secure for their PRTF. Um, and I just wanted to note, just. And I just wanted to note, just in my work, you know, we have such a huge shortage of placements for, for youth, especially those with complex needs, like we have kids staying in hotel rooms, we have kids staying in emergency rooms for extended periods of times. And so I, I can't say how much I support this, just because it's, it's very, very needed in our state, so.
A motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, yes.
Second.
Motion on D, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my barrier. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
And the last item for consideration is the resolution 11241E. This comes from the Finance Committee and the negotiation with our three elected officials in the county, which the resolution is in your packet of the salary that was negotiated with all three of these. So with that, I would ask for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve 1E.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
And just to note, I know you had some questions on, from Highway. He did send over some information that Peggy did print, if you'd like me to pass that out, and then he is online for any additional questions, if you want to.
The pulled consent agenda.
The pulled consent agenda.
Yes. But perhaps we can put him after the breaks, you have some time to take a look at his info, or however you'd like to do it.
Yeah, maybe let's do it after the break.
Unless he's got, unless he has the deuce, that doesn't.
You do it right after the comp plan, too, or.
Yeah.
Or before comp plan.
Everybody gets two. There's two pieces, there's two packets, you get the whole. You understand this?
Yeah, I don't understand anything.
Good morning. Good morning.
Start me understanding. Okay. You don't follow, right?
Best part is when Richard screws it up, then we get it, we get it.
Thank you.
Comes up and doesn't rate for us, we don't have to screw it up.
Okay.
Set and ready? So my first item to bring before the board is the resolution 11241H, which is approving the 2025 cash-in lieu amounts for all employees. So you can see that there are going to be two amounts for employees. This is the first time that this is going to happen since there were a number of unions that did have it written into their contract of a 25, 75% split of the difference for the lowest HSA eligible employee plus one and family plan, as well as the individual.
Have a motion to approve 1H?
I'll make a motion to approve 1H.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Erica. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My second item is to propose a revision to our current vacation policy. So currently, we have a cap of 224-hour carry forward from year to year, proposing to move to a 240-hour carry forward and move the date of the use-by or lose to March 31st instead of December 31st, with the idea that it would be easier for people to utilize their vacation, not right over the holiday period if they are running into an, an amount in excess, as well as any amount that is lost to employees be moved into the catastrophic medical leave bank instead of lost completely.
Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, with this, I, I just wanted to note that this was also vetted by department heads as well. This is really their solution to some of the issues that we've had with this.
Is there, does this affect union contracts at all?
It will, yes, the amount will change. So if approved by the board, then I would be taking it to the individual union contracts and, and proposing an addendum to those.
Need a motion to approve the recommendation?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to update 12.2 eligibility and scheduling of the personnel policy.
Second?
Second.
Second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then my last item is to add a policy into our employee handbook for our personnel policy, I apologize, for insurance contributions for married county employees. So we do have a couple of married, married couples that work for the county that we've been doing this for under administrative rule, and we were asked by the Auditor Treasurer's Office to actually have a policy in place. And so this would be that policy. Ultimately, we are allowing for employees that are married, both working full-time for the county, to utilize both of their county contributions towards one employee plus one or family plan versus having to take one family plan or employee plus one plan and then keeping this individual plan out here.
Motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve the insurance contribution for married county employees.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Further discussion? I think it's just, you know, clean things up.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's a need.
It, it does have some ramifications if, if it, if anyone requests to go the next step farther, I think. That's, that's where the concern would be if.
What do you mean?
If individuals who aren't using the, the insurance would like to get paid back there and not, and not claim it, I think you have to be aware that that would be the next request. So, so an example, if I'm, if I'm on my spouse's insurance, I'm not utilizing county insurance and if I sign off I don't want it, then I could ask to be reimbursed that full amount rather than taking that single coverage. Because I'm, everyone's required, you're deducted your single coverage at all times, no matter what. This is not.
But in this, in this case, there, we're combining both singles to make one family.
Correct.
You one employee, one employee is taking the employee plus one, and then we are compensating back.
So the reason for the very specified language of both employees working full-time is to help to clarify that piece. That wouldn't be obviously a consideration at this time, and it would be ultimately up to the board if in the future that was ever a consideration, but for the purpose of this policy, that's, that is the reason for the very clear verbiage on both employees working full-time. We wouldn't even consider one part-time, one full-time married couple.
I mean, that's, hate to quote a former commissioner, but a slippery slope, wouldn't you?
Got a motion in a second for the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jer.
Thank you.
Maybe need a quick break, or?
I think we should maybe do the Toad Mountain, just so.
Okay.
The folks that are here can.
Sounds good. I don't need a break yet.
So we can take a break after that.
Morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Kerry.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
I got a couple of different things, three different things to talk about today or get approval for. Maybe I'll go out of order. The first one is the MPCA grant application to, or apply for MPCA grant to get into organics, source separate organics, collecting them and ultimately transferring those down to Pope Douglas, their organics processing facility. Excuse me, this grant would basically pay for our infrastructure to get us started on this, be collecting organics from schools, public drop sites, and businesses.
I guess I look for the committee on what the costs versus benefits would be if.
I guess, I just watching Clay County to try to keep the organics out of their waste or they had to do with the pumpkins. And started that program, there was about, remember right, 360,000 pounds of pumpkins over the years of, rather than getting them buried into the landfill, they sourced them elsewhere and working very well. And I think other counties are looking at, ought to separate organics. And I, I, I think the best thing is, is has to be a trial and error.
Sure. And it does cause a lot of trouble, you know, for prairie lakes and, and it's not that expensive. We don't think, we don't know, it doesn't look that expensive to try and separate it out and get rid of it. And it makes a lot of sense, there's a lot of stuff comes from central market, all different places that shouldn't really end up in the garbage, it should be. So it's, and it, it's not a complicated thing to do, so.
Well, I think the schools would be a simple one, I mean, all the wasted food and, and, and grocery stores.
I wanted trained bears. These guys keep shooting me down. I would take care of them, you know?
The pumpkins, you come out to my place and watch the deer eat the pumpkins, it's, it's just crazy, but I, I was up in, when I was up in Alaska, the bears were eating out of the, the dump, the dump pretty heavy up in one of their dump sites, so have to dispose of it properly and.
So this is just to apply for the grant? If, if we would get approved for the grant, there would be.
There would be an agreement that would.
An additional information as far as what.
There would be, there'd be, the grant itself would have to be approved by the board. It was.
Okay.
Motion on 1J?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Richard, I'll second that. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Carry.
The other item is resolution 11241I, SRF Professional Services Agreement. We brought that back to the board. The board made a motion last time to move this forward, and this would allow, this, this would start the process to develop a master plan for the Toad Mountain Park project. And basically, once you get through that, it would be next year, about this time, when you'd be notified whether or not the county received grants to acquire the property. And then at that point, you'd make a decision if you wanted to move forward with the purchase of the property.
Steve, I don't know if you're aware, we did item, add item three?
I did, yeah. I'm aware of that, we can talk about that.
Resolution to Lake Township?
Which order you want to talk about those items, if you.
I guess we can address the memorandum.
I think it would be wise perhaps to talk about that first before the other.
Talk about the memorandum.
I just want to speak a little, you know, I, I have been quite clear throughout the whole process that I'm only going to support it if, if the town board, you know, specifically supports it. And, you know, as you know, Steve, they did pass a moratorium on Saturday to, I don't know that the moratorium can stop us or can make anything, but to me, the fact that they had to go to the length of a moratorium speaks loudly and clearly about what they're, what they want. So for me, I don't know if we're talking about the moratorium now or if we're talking about the master planning, but for me, I have to, I have to follow with what the town board wishes, and I would be, I'm, I'm not in support of us moving further, moving forward with any master planning for this project.
I'm in agreement with Erica. No matter how we do this, it's going to cost us money. I don't care if somebody gives us money, it's still going to cost us a lot of money. We don't have any extra money, and we know we don't have any extra money. And talking to people, I consistently, people are coming up to me and mentioning this, and they don't understand it, and I can't see a huge amount of tourism, that would be the only benefit for us. Otherwise, we're going to have maintenance. Once we get into this, we'll never be able to get out. We're going to have employees, we're going to hire more employees. I, I have not, just a handful of people in here have supported it, but out, out in the county, I can't find any support for it. And I'm against it, and I would like to let these people rest and go home, and I think we should put it to bed and move on with other things. Jerry's right, we should be working on these trails. There's things that we, that we should be working on, those trails are terrible. And, 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 and they need, we're going to take on more stuff now, let's take on this project that nobody wants and ignore stuff that we could be doing. So I'm against it, and I would like to see it go away and let these people go back to their lives.
Moving forward on this, you do a motion on the, deny, or accepting the resolution, or?
Well, I have a question, what, what is the Toad Lake moratorium on the agenda for? I mean, just to be made aware that we are.
Correct.
To recognize it, so we recognize the moratorium. I think we all, I mean, Kerry sent it to us early, so we've read it and understand it.
Resigned to finance yesterday.
Okay, so we're, we don't, that's, so we're through with that part of it.
Yes, yes.
Seen your moratorium and, and read it, so now we go on, I mean.
I think really.
Accept, accept that your, your position. I guess, I, I just had a question, would it make it a difference if the township was a partner in this? Was a, was a partner for a non-motorized, non, I mean.
I, I think I can speak to that a little bit, Barry. You know, I've attended, with the exception of this last board meeting, I've attended all board meetings about it, and, and there has been a lot of discussion, and I think there's been support by some people that have attended those meetings about bringing it back to restoration and having it non-motorized, minimal development. But we attended the, the meeting.
In October.
October meeting. And, and it was quite clear by everybody on the board, as well as most people in attendance, that they, there really is some mistrust, I think, between the township and the county, and they don't, they just don't think that we should have a part of owning it. There's, of course, concerns about additional expenses that would come, fall back on the taxpayer and possibly the township. And I think that the last, the meeting in October, it was, it was clear that I, I don't think that there's anything we can do to, even partnering with them to, to make any difference in the process.
I also was at that township meeting, and it was clear that the township board does not support moving forward. And Randy spoke in the, and he's the township chairman, he spoke in the open forum here, and he also stated that the township board is not in support of moving forward, so I.
Has there been a commitment from the donation, donator to the, to, have they started the process? Have we started payments and?
The, the, the money's been received, but it hasn't been spent.
Hasn't been committed.
Correct.
Well, I think we did approve this. So if we do nothing, it's going to move forward? That's my opinion. I could be wrong, but we did approve it to move, to accept it and move forward. It hasn't been incurred or hasn't been spent, so I would, I would assume that you would need a motion by this board to rescind that and, and not accept the grant and, and return it, and if that's the wish of the board. I think it's still a good project and like to move forward. I certainly would respect the wishes of the board if they choose otherwise. But I think you need a, if you're going to consider moving this back, not doing this, you need a motion from this board.
Yeah.
I'd like to make that, that motion that you just mentioned, Barry.
I think your motion perhaps should be that you're not accepting the contract for the master plan and to return the donation if that's your wishes.
That would be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Richards, second by Erica to return a donation.
And not to accept the master plan contract.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to acknowledge anyone in the audience or not, but.
Yes, I will. Delta.
Thank you, and I apologize for not talking on the open forum. My name's Delta Day, got a little 679 Lake Forest Circle. But relax, I can't vote for you, I'm Florida resident. The president and owner is returning to Minnesota in November, and with some ideas. Eventually, that land will be sold to somebody. Like exposure in Florida, there's people in this world, there's money is no one. Somebody will come in sometime and turn it into something, whether it's two years from now or 20 years from now, but sometimes. Somebody will come in sometime and turn it into something, whether it's two years from now or twenty years from now, but sometime. Toad Mountain will disappear as it is presently known. One of my nephews, great nephews is a caretaker for a deal in Montana. Is owned by a ninety acre plot on. Calistella Lake. Owned by a hedge fund manager from Milwaukee, who's there one month in July and three weeks in December, otherwise. Matt Daggett is the caretaker, living with his wife in a separate home, like I said, there's people, there's money is no one. What, what these ladies are working on. Would be a non- invasive. Actually, I don't know if you're familiar with Holbrook Lake, Holbrook Farm South of Town, which is a retreat for service manager's wife and his family. They would like to see it turned into a retreat for veterans that are mentally battle starved. I guess I just ask that the commissioners, and I, oh, and I can understand the Toad Lake people. We lost, um, we won on getting, shutting down convenience store in our backyard, we lost to the city building. Hundred and fifty unit apartment building in our backyard. So everybody wins and loses, but, but there's. Good thoughts behind this program, and my wife inherited substantial amount of money years ago. With land, her heart is in a good place. She sold the land for less than market value because the person she inherited would be teased that she did it that way. She inherited from, and I guess I'll, I'll ask it to. Been messing with this for several months. The money is in the bank. I hate to see it shut down. She's even received a pledge of, from another firm or, or association. Towards this project, so if people are, when they find out the reasons for it, I, I, I think they can live with it. I guess about it, if you have any questions, I'll, you have to answer, I'm sorry, my wife is not here, to defend herself or to present a deal. As in all her health is pretty shaky, and she's. I would be amiss of like this, representing her or defending her, if I didn't stand up and make these comments.
Thank you for that, Delta, and I, and I wholeheartedly agree that that is a wonderful project that, that she's working on, and I think it would be. A huge asset to the community and to those that are veterans that suffer from that. My concern is, is I don't know that that is a project that the county can take on, and I think there are probably nonprofits or some other. Agencies that could maybe assist in that and make it happen, I just, I, I don't know that it is something that the county can take on because. It has the potential of, of costing, you know, a lot of money for, for taxpayers, and. I, I just, I want to thank you and your family for, for offering it, but. I just think at this time, it's, it's something that, in my opinion, I don't know that the, the county can, can take on.
But are you shutting off every, anything happening in the future? You're right, veterans organizations, things like that, what have you given. Are you shutting it down forever? By passing this resolution, that's my, that's my only concern.
I, I guess I'm, I think as far as county ownership, as far as the county owner, owning it. That, that would be a yes, as, shutting down as far as, you know. Another agency coming in and doing something that we would have to address at that time, it is of my opinion that at this time. We should, the county is not wanting to move forward in any ownership of Toad Mountain, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, this, this board is, is five commissioners, and this board in January one could be completely different, and that board could have a, you know, who knows what their opinions would be, so. If a vote goes today, regardless, if we accept, if we, even if we continue on the road and do the study, doesn't mean that we're going to. Continue on and do the mountain, I mean, I, I would hope that if you're going to spend that money, that's the intent. I may think, and it was mentioned from the opposing group, that would be the intent of, of moving forward, but the future board might not see that same intent. So there is nothing guaranteed, there's no guarantee that this board couldn't, couldn't go and ask or look for a, if there's a new proposal, that would be considered also. But I think if it's voted down, I think it would be, would have to be substantially. Different, one way, either a new board or a new, so, nothing's for sure in this world, but. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I want to thank the donations, the people, Delta, Karen, and the family for coming forward, I, I think it's. Commissioner Nelson's down the road, probably a great project, but is it right for Becker County right now to strap themselves, and we got other issues? And being a past township board member, I remember at times, the county board didn't listen to the townships. On local issues, and I still think our township governments are the most grassroots former government we got, and. Much of that, you know, I'd probably like to support it at this time, I'm just not sure if I can at this time with all the opposition and the township views, so. I know I have in the past, but I guess it comes to a vote and.
We'll see what the vote says.
Delta, thank you, and thank Karen for the, the opportunity, yeah.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Who's on board one? Thank everyone for coming in.
Can we take a break?
Yeah. Take a break.
Thank you.
Good morning. I have Planning Commission recommendations from October 30th. First being JAA Land LLC, which is a final plat for 28 storage units to be known as Turtle Lake Toy Lockers. Recommendation was to approve.
I'll make my recommendation to concur with the planning commission.
Motion, a second?
A second.
May we, for the discussion?
I will say, and I know the developers here, I've heard a lot, there's just this last few weeks now, I've heard so much negative about these toy lockers going up. Specifically, the one going down just north is Pelican Zorbas. There's a big one going up there that people are a little bit upset about.
Otter Tail County?
Yeah, Otter Tail County.
Was it passed?
Otter Tail County.
What, Quaman?
Yeah.
Did it go through?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Because I've heard dirt's been moving there, and just the one on five and six. And it, you know, they do look industrial. It's a, it's a look that's, it'd be nice if it's there, it'd be nice if they weren't right on your main travel routes. But I don't know if we look at ordinances in the future to require some tree spacing or tree on the exterior zone to make, I mean, because the one on five and six, you're coming right into Big Corman Lake. And it is, it is, and if you take a couple away, does it matter? I guess, you know, at the end of the day, it probably doesn't. But they're just right up against the road and it, just like one coming in on six, John. I mean, now you're looking at wall of toy storage for the whole way. So, I don't know, I don't know, it's just change that I don't know, I don't like. And I don't know if there's something that we, it's just, it's the way we're going. I mean, it's not, but we have to accept that that's the way we're going. And nobody likes change, just like, you know, the item before, nobody likes change. So, I can support this, this final plat. And good, best of luck.
Motion, a second, on the paper?
Aye.
Carrie.
Next applicant, John and Deanne Amundson, requested a conditional use permit to replace a retaining wall. Recommendation was to approve.
Motion to concur with planning's on.
All second. All second.
Second by Dave, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next applicant, Fortner Remich, revocable trust requesting a conditional use permit to replace retaining walls. That was also recommended to approve.
I'll make a motion to concur with the planning commission.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Same way Barry, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last applicant, Casey Clem, requested an amendment to an existing conditional use permit, which was document 654801, to remove stipulation number six. The recommendation was to amend that to a 10-year timeline instead of the five-year. So, going forward, it would, he would have to come back in 10 years from today's date if mining is not complete. There was a second amendment considered there to change the travel route, which was kind of suggested by Oudman Township. But because that was not part of the noticing process, we tabled that amendment. The recommendation was to amend stipulation six to a 10-year period.
So moved.
All second. All second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, just in light of time for the applicant, he'd like to take this plat if he, if he could sign.
Did we do the sunset farm form?
That one will go to Burlington Township.
Gotcha.
This on a toy locker?
Yes, yep.
Well, I got a notebook full of change requests.
Aye.
No, actually, actually, they're-
Are we gonna do anything on the?
On Jim's?
Jim's?
Oh, that's right. Um, what is the cost? Is this a month, is this a yearly or monthly cost of $30?
Yeah, it's monthly. There's a lot of different ones, but they must have more lighting on some than others.
Looks like it's for one month, for one light, is that right?
Well, that's what, each one of these is one light, I would say.
One, each one of these must be one light.
Jim is online if you have specific questions, that's what he sent over.
Yeah, those are monthly charges, if you can hear me.
Yep, thanks Jim.
Yep.
I guess, just in a nutshell, electricity costs between $2 and $5 a month, depending upon whether there's one light or two lights at the intersection. The big expense is the base charge or the meter charge or whatever. Lake region charges $39 a month. Wild Rice charges $50 a month. When we started this, I mean, it was essentially half that. You know, we were looking at about $25 an intersection, where now we're looking $40 to $50 an intersection a month. So, that's what, what the fees are for electricity.
Any more questions, Barry?
Well, I just, I just think it's, I think it's a lot of monthly expense for, for what we get on. I mean, there's, I know one intersection where I just, I just can't, I don't sport it.
Yeah, I know one out there too, but there's a lot of them that it really has helped.
Jim, is there any statistics on lighted intersections? I mean, I see a big benefit, safety-wise, to having them. But do we have any statistics on, on them?
Well, it just has come up in our safety plan. You know, the state did the safety plan in 2012 for all the counties. And this was identified as a high priority. I don't have statistics off the top of my head, you know, for reductions. I could look that up. And I don't know, maybe it makes sense for me to kind of make contact the electric companies, you know, even if they just removed the meter or whatever and charged us a flat rate of like $10 a month, you know, twice electric, we'd save some money. And I don't know if we could negotiate that or not.
Costs us that a month.
Jones, but then-
No.
But saves one bad accident and costs.
Yeah, I mean, that-
Yeah, but we, we can't protect people from themselves from everything. I mean, it's just, it's not possible. And we can't be a society that says, oh, I don't want you to walk across the street because it's, you have a chance of getting hit. I mean, there, there are risks on living and-
There is, but there's also, you know, if you're in charge of the highways, you're supposed to try and make them safe. And I, I don't know how this balances out.
Well, we-
It is expensive, but-
It's summer, signing on a road, you know.
I just-
It's a safety issue.
You could put, you could light every road for every mile, it'd be safer. I mean, you could, you could put guardrails on every road and every mile, and that'd be safer. I mean, there's, you can make things safer, but where do you say, you know, we're, we're living in the country, and you, you should know your, no, I'm just saying, there's a couple roads there that I just think, I don't see the full benefit. You know, the intersection of Becker 1 that continues to 145, which will stop, that's a four-way intersection. There, there's very little traffic crossing there. I just, you know, there's one, and the intersection of Becker 5 and 6 on the north, I don't know if anyone's ever went off that road there. Now, I can certainly agree on, on Becker 138 and 11. Now, that one, that one has had someone go off and pass away this last couple of years. But that's more of an urban area.
One in the past up on 14 and 7, I questioned on that one that, but hell, probably-
It's the T ones.
Engineering study done.
These ones.
And then bring back each location and-
That's what we should do. I, I'm in agreement with you, Barry. Maybe they don't all need them, but the ones that, that really do need them, we should look at.
How did, how did we determine these, Jim?
They came from the state. Didn't they come from the state, Jim?
They came from our county safety plan.
Okay. So, there's no requirement that we do all of them?
No.
No.
I mean, you look at like 103 coming up the Highway 10. Do we think that's, I mean, by what standards do you think that would be? I mean, I would-
We'd be better off with a flash and stop sign there.
Yeah.
And then we don't need, so the flash and stop sign, go off of solar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That might work, yeah.
But then, you know, I look at two, maybe the intersection of-
25 and 34, none of that.
Of seven and, what's that one? That goes to Hitterdall, that beat road might, you know, with the beat trucks traveling that one. That, you know, and that's not on here. That, that's a high traveled for beat truck at 24-hour day one, that one might be more. So.
And 139 and 34, 39 going north, I thought that had a light on it. Maybe it's just the church parking lot.
But anyway, we're, we're spending a lot of time on, on this, but-
Yeah, we could have flashing stop signs on all those on Highway 10 and 34.
Just for the engineering, then come back to the committee with the actual, look at each location.
Yeah.
Let's remind us all.
We can maybe talk about it more on our road tour.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Move forward on item 12?
Need a motion to approve?
Well, yeah, I suppose you should.
Approve the grant, also move, request, grant request.
Where's my Barry, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would, would like the option, though, of fine tuning this list, because I don't, I don't think they all should be, I don't think we should put them all in, just because of the ongoing expense. You know, if we're talking, if we're talking $10 a month, I can support that per site. But you talk $50 a month per light-
Yeah.
Plus any replacement, I mean, everything.
I think it would be good to, as Jim said you were gonna do, to talk to the-
That would be, yeah.
The electric companies and just see what-
Maybe we can get it down to 10.
Maybe they're interested in helping out.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Peggy didn't capture who'd made the motion and who seconded.
Barry made the motion.
Second. Very good, thank you.
Got it.
We don't want to correct it in a minute.
That's what we were trying to avoid.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, for the next item for the comp plan, I just wanted just to give a very quick backstory. In discussions with Kyle, we thought it would be helpful just to go back through the work session that the, this, this board had and to highlight some of the revisions. The Bolton Inc. is online as well for any future questions. And I also thought it might be helpful, because we also had, as you recall, a public hearing where there were some questions asked versus testimony specifically. So, we did go back through the tape and try to capture some of those questions. And I think Kyle has a copy of those. So, if there's any answers to any unanswered questions that the public may have asked, I also wanted to capture that during this as well.
Who wants to lead off?
We got a PowerPoint there.
Okay.
So, essentially, from our previous work session, the first thing that we wanted to address is implementing, you know, within the plan itself, the process and how you create a surface water ordinance. That was about the first topic that we had. And it will not be specific to, you know, any type of boat, but more or less any type of boat or speed issue or wake issue, they will just be directed on how to do that through that process. The second issue that we really focused on was the residential growth within the county. After some further thought and a little bit of discussion, I think a suggestion could be to, you know, reduce that residential yellow areas immensely and maybe focus on just some buffers around cities, Oudman Lake Park, Detroit Lakes, Frazee, down to, let's say, one acre lot sizes. And then if the property is adjacent to or adjoining a city boundary, that we would offer some more density for future annexation and lower assessments and what have you. But we didn't update the map just simply in light of our budget. We're bumping up of, to our threshold there. So, rather than going and having them change that again and overspending, just my suggestion that we pick, say, two miles. That was common talk for lifespan of everybody, the city and the county, extraterritorial area. We could do two miles, have that focus on residential growth, make them one, you know, one acre, and then bordering adjacent cities. Could be, you know, half acres, what have you, whatever you decide in the zoning ordinance itself. But my suggestion would be to just lower that residential area. I mean, that would, I think, take care of a lot of the rural concerns from the townships that Barry and I spoke with.
Are we keeping, are we keeping in the rural area, keeping it residential, but keeping the minimum lot size two and a half? Or we're just keeping it all agriculture?
I think we'd keep it egg.
Okay.
I mean, just from what we've heard, there's been a lot of opposition to any, any change there. You know, no one has caught, we heard the, the residential affordable housing. I mean, that's what, that's what we got back in the comp plan. But I guess we can focus on keeping that within a close proximity to, you know, cities.
And really, if we're keeping the, the lot size at two and a, two and a half acres, I mean, the lot size would be the same, so.
Yep, and I think, you know, Barry's suggestion of going back, if, you know, if you, if you're gonna go two and a half acres, then, you know, maybe there would be some incentive by ordinance to do that, you know, without all these plating requirements and what have you. And that's a cost savings in itself and maybe, you know, more appealing to a developer. So, I think it's a good give and take.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, and I have a question on the multi, or the mixed use also. But if you go out in the country, the way, the reason why these storage sheds, they're just so dense and they're so, they're, they're big, they're not 10-foot high. They're now, you know, 25 feet tall. But it doesn't give you that rural feeling anymore. I mean, so when you come into those, you're like-
Almost like an apartment.
Yeah, it's, it feels to me like, it reminds me of the, you ever see the one movie business that has that wavy line in front of The Matrix? That it's all those buildings and it's just, it's kind of, it reminds me of that industrial-type scenario. But I, I do, I, I was going to recommend putting in that surface water ordinance, you know, and you can, you can reference the St. Clair. I used to have a book of ordinances and I could not find them yesterday or this weekend, where, where we had those different, Mary has them up in her office, I think.
Well, and I think what the plan was for that was to put the web, the link to the webpage from the DNR site, that the DNR-
Right.
outlines how to, the steps for developing a surface water ordinance.
Yeah, you can reference, you know, St. Clair Lake is, that's an example of what has been done in the past for- What are we doing with the, with the, the mixed use that?
I guess we didn't have a lot of discussion on that. I mean, we focused it basically, we, any commercial that we've added is basically along the US 10 or 59 or 34 corridors. That mixed use is more focused in, you know, congregated areas such as Four Corners or 6 and 11. We looked at some down by the Roadhouse, I believe.
It was actually on County 1 and then extending on to, wasn't it County 1?
It was, and we-
And went around that lake, remember? And the township wanted that removed because it's-
Right, so we'll, we'll shift that towards, you know-
But are we gonna still have that mixed, mixed use? Because it says on residential zoning or mixed use dwelling units, four dwelling units for one acre.
Right, so that will change through the actual ordinance update. We, there will still be mixed use on this map, moving forward. And again, we'll limit that to like Four Corners or Four and Five there.
Can we just take that four dwelling units-
Absolutely.
And to one acre off?
Yeah.
Because that, I mean, and probably just say, check with zoning ordinances to determine density on them.
Absolutely.
I mean, that would-
Robin, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
I don't like four units on one acre in country, it's like-
No, and what we were looking at with mixed use was more of a type of, maybe a residential apartment with-
With business, or a home, home with a business.
Right, 100%, not, not high density by any means.
And there, then there, some of those are out there in different spots.
Yeah.
So, what do you, what are we doing now?
My suggestion was that he would just run through any of the revisions. I certainly wasn't thinking that the board would make a decision today. We can certainly bring it back, or if you're comfortable with this, you certainly could make a decision.
Our hope is to bring it back at our next board meeting, right?
That was the original intent, yes.
I think, you know, I think it's pretty, pretty, you know, we, we take out those number of units. And what I found, and actually, I was on the wrong plan, I, for some reason, I was on the-
So, if you look, I mean, this, that, that map that was just up would be updated. Most of that yellow would go away, you know, it'd be concentrated just around the cities.
Oh, I did.
Yeah, new ones, 20s.
Yeah, I marked up my old copy, for crying out loud.
Can you, you know, make the revisions and then send us all a new copy?
Yes, absolutely.
Updated, so, because I got the old ones and the newer ones and-
Yeah, I gotta-
No, and we'll do that, but again, I, you know, I was just talking with Robin, and our budget is, we're about there, so-
I think we're close, so I mean, it's-
We didn't want to, we didn't want to send it to their GIS department and have them-
Yeah.
Go through this whole thing and it not be something that you're on board with. So, she can do that pretty easily and we can get it to you.
Yeah, I, I went through a previous plan, I mean, the one right before this. And I, just, there were, besides the, you know, a couple things that we already talked about, they're just minor, minor things. So, I don't see, I mean, if we, if we move forward now, I don't, and get it, get the corrected with those two things, I don't, I'm, I'm very comfortable with moving forward on it.
Okay.
You've done, that's why I checked, I just checked my mirror, oh, that one's done. And there's a couple of those that are done already that. Did we mention forestry in a, in the current plan? You know, the sustainable forestry and for county, county use? I didn't see it in the plan that I looked at.
Robin, can you speak to that?
Or do we need, do we need to, you think?
I don't know.
I thought there was, I thought there was a preservation of it in there.
Well, I think we want sustainable forestry on, on county tax forfeit and, and DNR land. I mean, we, we support, and just to simple say, we support sustainable forestry on, on government property.
Yeah, I know, I know there was a preservation, but I don't, can't speak to sustainability.
I'm trying to find it right now.
H35, manage resources sustainable, sustainably to balance inter-supporting the restoration of natural habitats. But it doesn't specifically say anything about forestry.
I would just like that in there to manage, to manage the forestries for timber and, you know, for timber and-
Yeah.
Cutting and for our local-
Well, given the conversations we've been having, I think it's probably pretty valuable to have that in there, right?
Yeah. And then the, the other thing is supporting infrastructure. I mean, did we want to support infrastructure for rural natural gas? I don't think that was mentioned. I don't think we do anything, but I think we just support, you know, because out in my area, there's a lot of natural gas being going and acknowledged, I don't-
Well, yeah, even in the future, you might have rural water systems coming in too, it's just a big push.
Yeah, there's a, well, it's a lot of it up in the Clay County area, again, north, it's all rural water coming in.
Even Otter Tail County-
Are they doing it too?
Is signing on and support, we have some issues.
Well, we, we signed on, I think, at one time too, to support.
We let her support.
Because we were, there was a couple communities on the edge for us.
Yeah.
But like-
The smaller ones like Oklahoma, Calway, just can't afford to put in water treatment plants.
So, then they have a big one and then they have one, because to hire someone to manage those is extremely expensive.
Is it gonna be licensed and trained and?
Yeah, and so then they can minimize costs, but otherwise, I am-
Fine.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what we got going there.
Make the revisions and change this and get a copy of it.
Yeah, I think it looks, looks well.
Over another 20 years.
30.
Yeah.
Now, we keep revising our ordinances and updating them and-
Yes, that, yeah, well, we've kind of sent some of them preliminarily to the DNR and what have you, just because there's some, can be extensive review by them on timelines and things. You just have to start the process with them. So, I can share that with you now, this week, today, whatever, we can be getting that review now. Just as Carrie had stated, just to go over some of the questions and from the public hearing itself that we got, I guess, going, there was obviously some grammatical errors in there that, you know, will be fixed, have been fixed. There were some questions about conformance with state statute. Obviously, Robin had- Obviously, Robin had took responsibility for that error in the statute in the, one of the first draft plans. Brian McDonald has been involved in this process and definitely is aware of, you know, the accusations that we have not followed state statute and he's not raised any concerns that I'm aware of. I don't believe Kerry is either, or Robin. And Bolton and Mink also does have their own counsel. Moving on to probably one of the more controversial things in the year, besides wake boats, was CAFOs. I never received any direction from this board that we didn't want CAFOs in this county. So unless we've misunderstood something, it was always the idea that we figure out where maybe there was some suitable locations for them. So that's exactly what the plan did. It took into consideration public water setbacks, soil types and slopes. And not to say that A two means, you know, that we're just, everybody bringing CAFO here, but those are ideas or locations that suggest the best suitable locations for them.
And as far as CAFOs, though, Kyle, as we're moving forward with our zoning ordinances, because I know, you know, we've talked before about like.
Setbacks, maybe.
It's all setback and like neighborhood.
Right.
Approval, I mean, there are certain things that we can, we can put into an actual zoning ordinance that would address.
Right.
Some of that, you know, so far away from a school or a business or a.
Just like cannabis, so far away from the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, the comp plan's only job was to identify, number one is there areas for them, right? So that's all it's saying. The ordinance itself will regulate them. We're definitely going to look at setbacks. I think there wasn't even, there's not even going to be opposition from the egg side of the fence on that. I don't think they're going to try and, you know, go to Calway and put a feedlot next to that school or wherever. It's not a topic of theirs. And I mean, it was, it was said, you know, the testimony is, we don't want them. Why are we, why are we advocating for them or what have you? Well, there was quite a bit of testimony over the last few years that, you know, we've had farmers in here. They want the option. So I guess I just wanted to address that. Again, there's surfboard stuff in there. And the stance that I've, or the direction I've gotten is that, you know, we'll look at them should a petition come before us for Lake Pacific. But the county board was not going to, you know, ban them countywide or pick lakes themselves. They would have to be petitioned and then you would consider that. There was some stuff about the mission statement, how that was obviously created. If you remember from our very early on work sessions, you know.
Not a mission plan or a strategic plan.
Well, mission and vision, we kind of, you know. Other than that, you know, obviously, again, there was some concern on residential growth. And I think we've addressed that by limiting that to those specific city areas. There was concerns about, you know, DNR land being targeted as residential. This will obviously fix that as well. Other than that, I mean, I guess there was also discussion on who has been involved. Obviously, there's been multiple state agencies. And our focus groups, Fisheries has been there, Hydrologist has been there, Soil and Water has been there, Cola Township's been notified, City's been notified. We weren't obviously able to connect with each individual one, but they definitely were given notice. So other than that, I don't have anything further.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank Kyle. The, these are, these aren't easy, these aren't fun. Similar to what Steve did with Toadmont, I mean, we directed him to do things and it's not easy and it's not fun. And the work that's put into it is stressful and we thank you for doing it. And you get, I mean, you're presenting it and you're not, you know, I mean, it's a, it's what your job that we're asking you to do and you get grief for it. So thank you and you get grief from us sometimes too. Not from the guy on the end there, but I'm sure, I'm sure he's.
Me and him are tight. We never argue.
But sincere, a sincere thank you for doing this and.
Thank you.
And listening to our concerns and the people's concerns on what they, what we see. Because as we, as we see in this board meeting every day, you have a topic and there's always two sides to every topic. So thank you for navigating through this and getting us through this process.
Thank you.
Thank Kyle also, and then thank Robin for taking.
Thanks, Robin.
Time and.
And taking hits from us, myself specifically. Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, thank you, Robin.
I was involved twenty-some years ago on the compound and I didn't think it was fun either.
No, I was at a couple of those meetings also.
So just for the information, I will bring this, put this on the agenda then for final, next session.
Yeah, if we could get a packet with the revisions as soon as possible.
Correct, so you have it for review.
And I, I went through the, I don't think, there might be just a couple of words here and there, you know, just like us nitpicking on the minutes, you know.
And I think it would be good if there is, you know, to go back through it maybe one more time and make sure that like forestry is in there. That's a, that's a good catch, definitely with what's going on, so.
Here's the final.
Yeah.
Willis, I'd like you to speak just short, just short or thin. Thirty seconds or a minute.
I consider myself forewarned. Thank you for at least allowing me to make a few comments.
Twenty.
The issues we've raised about ongoing water contamination from various land uses, including the wells in several townships out eastern Becker County, the Straight River suffering to the point where it's no longer supporting trout, the Toad River being contaminated to the point where it is not safe for fishing or swimming, this kind of thing are ongoing issues that we'd like to have seen addressed in the, in the plan in addition to the continuing development of lakeshore, loss of lakeshore. These issues are current, they're real, they're not going to go away. They very likely will get worse. I appreciate the consideration of the egg units and feedlots for setbacks and selection of suitable soils. The problem is that the report that we prepared for you demonstrated that those measures in and of themselves are inadequate. So it should be very much in the commissioner's awareness that by approving those minimal measures, the surface and groundwater at Becker County will continue to degrade. So you're basically acknowledging that it's okay for these waters to continue to receive higher and higher loads of nitrates and phosphorus, which are detrimental to both surface and groundwater. It's disappointing to myself personally and to the Isaac Walton League that you, the evidence in front of you has demonstrated that that will be the result of this decision. And I'm not sure how you reconcile that. I realize you want to have farming, one is supported, one have economic development. But if it comes at the cost of the very thing that makes Becker County special, it's water, that seems to be contradictory.
Comment to your concern there, being involved in the one watershed in Otter Tail Plan right from the get-go and Erica is involved in the ones that are just starting out east. They're addressing those issues. We're addressing Otter Tail County where there was some contamination of wells. Even the coal iron in the Pelican River, north side of Detroit Lake here, they're addressing that. So there's, there's other bigger units out there that are actually boots on the ground that are working on it.
And the Crow Wing watershed, and I don't know if you read it, Willis, but it, it states that the water quality in that watershed is actually very good water quality. You know, that, that's, you know, that, that plan is more of a preservation versus a restoration, you know, because they, they do have good, good water quality. There is some high nitrates, but there didn't seem to be any concerns about the water quality in the watershed. And I think when it comes to the Toad Lake and my conversation with Brian is, they, they can't say with that, that specific river what caused that. They can't say that it came from agriculture or human use or wildlife. You know, typically, they can, they can make a determination, but for the Toad River, because I had a conversation after, you know, I received something in the mail also, you know, and that was what Brian had told me, is they don't know where that came from.
Yeah, Isaac Walton League has been very much involved in the Cedar River down by Mauer and Mauer County where that same issue came up. It was just high fecal coliform. So what they did in working with cooperation with the county is to take some samples and do the DNA. And once you do the DNA, you can determine whether it's human sources, wildlife sources, or livestock. So then you have some real clues as to what's going on. And that's the kind of thing that we believe would be progressive in terms of this plan, is to do some investigation, work with the soil and water conservation districts and do that analysis. I agree with you that the Crow Wing Watershed District is generally in good shape. But when you look at the Straight River itself, it has the highest nitrate concentration of any stream in the state and such that trout cannot survive in it anymore. And that's a very drastic problem that has a known source. Egg Department has pointed it out and the soil and water conservation knows exactly where it's coming from. Yet we seem to say, that's okay. You just let it, let it continue and let it get worse. And that just confounds the logic of anyone saying, why would we do that? It's a premier trout stream in Becker County, probably the best trout stream in Becker County, and it doesn't support trout. And it has directly the result of a land use that is controllable. You're generous with your time. I wish we could reach agreement on addressing these kinds of issues because they will get worse. Thank you.
Thanks, Willis.